Okay, guys, we're gonna go live now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it'll just be a moment.
All right, technical difficulties set aside, we're ready to begin. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, we have. And pretty well set forward, apart from Mike's addition while we were waiting. Does anybody have any reason to modify the agenda when we go forward?
We do have a public comment present today.
Uh, is that, uh?
It's Zach Nguyen, he's here at the end of the table.
Ah, okay. Well, I mean, the appropriate time for that would be now, would it not?
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name's Zach Nguyen. I live here in the city and I'd like to reiterate the comments I made last month. I apologize for my connection. I was on a bus. I believe my comments were forwarded to you. There is a major crisis, thank you, unfolding on a daily basis in the city. With open air drug encampments serving as the focal point for violence, overdoses, and criminal activity. Accounts of a recent walkthrough of the area by local officials with a railroad representative makes it clear. There needs to be immediate action from the county. And I suggest to call upon state assistance. I have personally communicated the urgency of the situation to Assemblywoman Kellis and State Senator Webb. They are both eager to assist and desire a resolution to this out of control situation. The City of Ithaca, the mayor, and the common council have abrogated their duty to provide for public safety. The city cannot be relied upon to govern its own affairs. I ask this body to seek out whatever means are available to it to immediately address this crisis. I have been writing about this and other issues on my website, ithacaprime.com. And I suggest the members of this board review the City of Ithaca Community Police Board meeting from yesterday. To hear Councilperson McGonigal's firsthand account from the jungle walkthrough. But what railroad has requested in writing that the city address these encampments. I would like to understand why these encampments are not dealt with immediately. I understand there is a county and city plan to address these encampments, neither of which call for them to be closed, but specifically to remain open. And I feel this is an irresponsible path to choose that will cost people their lives. I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome.
Perhaps at the end of the agenda, if we can take up the question of what role, if any, would be appropriate for this body to, um, do in this matter? Uh, moving on, the minutes. Anyone want to make a motion?
Joe, may I, may I respond? Is, I'm not sure that what the protocol is. May I respond to the public comment?
To, by, by, sure.
Uh, thank you. I do want to, uh, provide some context. Uh, it is indeed the case on July twentieth. I worked with, uh, the representatives of Watco Railway to organize a walkthrough of the Watco property, um, to review and discuss, uh, the situations that they are facing with regards to, uh, the homeless population, which is not only residing on Watco land, but also utilizing Watco property, um, in order to gain access to different areas of the city. Um, this was a very productive, uh, meeting, allowing many people who hadn't had the opportunity to see firsthand what is going on. Um, the opportunity to, uh, do so, um, along with members of, uh, the outreach group, uh, law enforcement, members of common council, and one member of the county legislature. I will say that the city has, uh, the city working group has proposed a draft policy for management of encampments on city lands that is available for public comment until August seventh. It will be discussed at our P E D C meeting, uh, I believe on the sixteenth. That proposal, um, outlines a protocol for, uh, how we would manage encampments on city land. It proposes a green zone where, um, encampments would be provided services such as, uh, perhaps showers and bathrooms and trash removal. Um, it would indicate a amber zone and a red zone, an amber zone indicating where camping might be tolerated. Um, and red zones where camping, um, is prohibited. Those zones also include, um, public rights of way, parked land, areas within the city that have a designated, um, use and purpose. Um, also proposed in the policy is how in individuals who are living unhoused would be interacted with and, um, provided supports and encouragement to relocate to an area that is designed to support those who are living unhoused. There are aspects that are open for input. Most directly, the city is looking to see, um, what level law enforcement should play in this policy, as well as if amber zones, um, are appropriate in this case. So I really encourage people to take a look at the policy and provide feedback to the city. I do agree with the speaker that this is mainly a land use policy. Primarily, we need the support of the county to provide services to those who are the most vulnerable, living unhoused, um, on city and clearly on private land as well. I would like to say very directly that it's a dangerous situation out there for those who are unsheltered. Currently, there are no outreach workers going into the encampments. It is too dangerous. There's a gentleman who is unhoused, who is missing and presumed, um, the victim of, um, violent acts. Um, because of that, there is very, very limited interactions by civilians into the encampment zones. We need to find a way to address this and, and, um, and we need to do that with the support of the county.
Thanks for that, Cynthia. So I can see, as I said, let's hope that there's time at the end to come back to this. Uh, the minutes. Somebody like, would someone care to make a motion? Mark. You're, you're muted.
I'll move the minutes.
And is there a second? Was that, was that Joe?
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, thanks. Um, any, any changes or are we good to vote? Hearing none? Um, all those in favor, approval? Say aye or aye. Anybody opposed? Abstaining? Okay, minutes approved. Lisa, what's going on with the county?
Lots, lots going on with the county, um, but I, um, there's one item in particular I wanted to, um, update this group on. And that is shared services, um. And for many of you, I'm preaching to the choir. You've been on the shared services panel, but, um, the panel has met multiple times this spring and summer. Discuss potential areas of mutual collaboration and shared services, including cybersecurity, code administration, animal control, broadband, but the area that was chosen with the broadest support and most critical need is the enhancement of, um, volunteer emergency response services through the county, throughout the county, and certain areas of the county in particular. Um, so the Department of Emergency Response at the county has, um, and with the, the, the input and the, the genesis of this coming from the working group here in T-Cog, um, um, emergency services is, has proposed a, the, a countywide rapid medical response pilot program providing basic life support services in, um, these targeted areas of the county, but can serve multiple areas of the county while waiting for, um, transport vehicles to arrive. Um, so that has been the major topic of discussion at the most recent, um, meetings of the shared services panel. And that is the, um, the project that is going to be submitted for, um, reimbursement through the countywide shared services initiative in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, the Department of Emergency Response and county administration have, has worked on and submitted this week, um, an L G E grant, local government efficiency grant, um, which can help with, um, ten percent of the initial year's costs of the program. Um, so we are, we've submitted that grant as well and will be um, following up on the, um, the shared services grant, and that would at least cover the first year of this pilot program. Um, as is, um, required through this program, there needs to be a schedule of public hearings and we're looking at, um, four public hearings in the month of September in, um, Caroline Lansing, Enfield Land or Newfield and, um, in the legislature, um, at a legislature meeting. And also, um, the legislature is going to be discussing this pilot program during its upcoming budget process in September and October. Um, just in scope of the, um, the county's budget process, not all of these line up, um, directly or cleanly, but, um, all of this, you know, with the understanding that we are hoping that the first year of this pilot program would be covered. Um, and that in future years for this pilot program, um, there will need to be, um, continued funding, um, wanting to explore different options for that, including potentially sharing costs with, with municipalities. So, uh, all of this is, um, preliminary, but is also, we're, we're taking um, definitive steps to, to make this a reality, um, for two thousand and twenty-four. Other than that, um, I'm in the middle of multiple departmental budget discussions for the two thousand and twenty-four budget in preparation for that and submitting and, um, a, a recommended budget to the legislature for deliberation, the, um, second legislature meeting in September. And, uh, happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Has it been target yet for budget, budget increases or?
Sorry, Joel, I didn't quite hear what you said.
But whether the legislature has set a target for, um?
Oh, uh, tax levy increase, um, the, the target that we're trying to come in at is, is two percent. Um, and that is, um, it's a difficult year given the, um, the increase in the mandate costs and the intercept of the, um, Medicaid funds, the federal Medicaid Assistance Program funds that is taken, as well as the increase in assigned council rates, and that's also another mandate, unfunded mandate. So those are very, very steep increases for the county to absorb in two thousand and twenty-four.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I think I see Annie Corman in the chambers.
Thanks, uh, Lisa, I just, uh, did you want to mention the strategic plan?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Um, uh, so, um, the, the county is, um, has a grant for this coming year to launch and it's conduct its first ever strategic operations plan. Um, and we are working with a contractor, Barry Dunn, who is helping us, helping guide us through this process. We have this week launched a very public, um, in, um, engagement campaign for, um, members of the public to provide input onto, um, into the plan and our municipal partners, um, have, are also invited and may be receiving, um, uh, an individual reach out from our consultant, um, Barry Dunn for either, um, a survey or a group interview or an individual interview. So if you, um, receive any communication from Barry Dunn, it, this is, um, in regards to the, the county's plan. There's also an ideas page and a webpage for the public to, to interact with and submit ideas to. Unfortunately, um, as all of this is going out, we've been notified of a scam, um, that is, the, the sheriff just put something out this afternoon. Um, there is something going around that says Tompkins County is looking for your survey input and we're offering three hundred dollars. We're not offering three hundred dollars. So if you get that one, that's a scam. But the, um, we are legit doing a strategic operations plan and, um, we're not offering money for, for input. So please do help, uh, provide your feedback to us.
Return addresses when you get the emails, right?
Yeah. That's right.
Thanks. Okay, well, we're, we're lucky to have Don Barber with us today. Who's going to, um, lead us in the focus on the county's food system plan? Welcome, Don.
Thank you, Joe. It's good to be with you all. It's, believe it or not, it's an honor to be at a T-Cog meeting again. For some of you, you may, uh, not know that I was the founding chair of T-Cog many years ago and held that position for roughly five years until I was able to get a co-chair and then eventually step aside. But there was a, prior to the T-Cog, there was a long history of political strife between local governments. Uh, which all started when the county moved from the le- to the legislature format from the Board of Supervisors. So, uh, T-Cog will hopefully be the final response to all that and I'm glad to see T-Cog has endured all these years and I hope it's meeting all of your needs. So I'm thinking I, that I need to share my screen and is that possible to do?
It is. See who needs to enable that, probably.
He should be able to do that.
Okay.
Is it enabled?
Yep.
Yes.
So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to share the work of the Food Policy Council in lifting the voices of our Tompkins County community to articulate a roadmap for our food future. You may remember Kitty Howes reported to you a little over a year ago on the development of our food system database. Since then, we have completed a plan, which was accepted by the Tompkins County Legislature in last August. And I will start by briefly giving a brief refresher of the baseline work and then move into the plan. So setting the stage, food is a necessity of life. And it comes to us via a global food system, which is impacted by environmental and geopolitical events around the world. So as such, it is vulnerable. Ninety percent of the food that's consumed in Tompkins County is not local. That food travels an average of fifteen hundred miles to get to our plate. The food system shows us our vulnerabilities in unequal economic and physical access. Inequality results in rampant food insecurity within our community. And much of the local food stuff available is unhealthy, highly processed, loaded with salt, sugar, and carbohydrates, causing chronic illness. So when one says food system, what are they talking about? The food system has six sectors: production, infrastructure, retail, access and security, consumption and waste. We also learned that during our work that the food system is a nexus of many systems that we live within, like human health, our environment, society and social justice, infrastructure, local economy, and community building. In two thousand and nineteen, the county legislature agreed to provide staff funding. And the community foundation agreed to provide program funding to create the Tompkins County Food System Plan. So we use the language on this slide to make our case. Then in two thousand and twenty, we hired Kitty Howes to begin our work, which to happen just as the pandemic was starting. So if we all think back to those days of the empty, empty grocery shelves, meatpacking plants shutting down, it laid bare many of the food system's vulnerabilities. We need a plan to meet our community's food needs and not left to the profit motive of corporations. First, we characterize our current food system. This is the first time this amount and breadth of food system information has been gathered and assembled. And then we developed a community-informed food system plan. Briefly, the process we used was the first fifteen months, we developed a baseline description of our current food system, resulting in hundreds of pages of data and also interviews and resource links. In spite of doing this work during the peak of the pandemic isolation, we were able to gather the voices of over two thousand community members to articulate a food system plan. The plan and executive summaries of the baseline data can be found on our website. So this slide shows, uh, when one goes to a website, that they will find executive summaries of the food, six food system sectors that are shown. And you can see the link, yeah, on the right-hand side. The next few slides are a quick refresher of the highlights that our food system database, uh, reports. This is the agriculture sector, the production sector, and it turns out the market value of agriculture in Tompkins County is sixty-five million dollars. Most are direct sales, but some product remains on the farm to feed livestock. But the look of agriculture in Tompkins County is changing from farms growing commodity products like corn and grains, beef and milk, to small niche farms. In fact, seventy-five percent of Tompkins County farms are both small in acreage and in sales dollar value. Nineteen of the percent of the farms sell directly to cus- consumers. And ninety-four percent of farmland is used to feed livestock. Or alternately, six percent of Tompkins County ag land grows food for humans and hort- horticulture. And this number is in keeping with national figures. This slide shows where we acquire food. And mainly, our food comes from a mix of retail restaurants and fast food establishments, which employ roughly thirty-three hundred workers. In addition, a significant portion of our local food is provided through institutions, colleges, schools, and a Huguenot Medical Center, for example. It should be noted that they buy very little local produce. As noted on this slide, other food sources are farmers' markets, CSAs, and farm stands. Tompkins County also has seventeen food pantries and the Food Bank of the Southern Tier, which has twenty-five partners in Tompkins County that support their work to counter food insecurity. Not shown on this slide is that the average age of food pantry volunteers in Tompkins County is seventy-four. Food pantries were originally conceived as an emergency response. But now, after decades later, they are a critical component for the food insecure community members in our county. I make this point because local government may want to find a role to support our local food pan- pantries and other structures that supply emergency food relief. This slide shows some key highlights of food access executive summary. The definition of food security is always having both physical and economics access to sufficient, safe, and nutritious food that meets one's needs in active, healthy life. To quantify the magnitude of food insecurity, our community would need to annually find and direct seven point four million dollars to supply all residents with food security, according to this definition. Slide also shows that sixty-two percent of the Tompkins County residents that are eligible for SNAP are not enrolled. Some of that seven point four million mentioned above could come from federal programs like SNAP. So as you can see, we have work to do. Eleven point six percent of adults and thirteen point three percent of children in Tompkins County are fully insecure. This slide highlights food consumption patterns. Twenty-four percent of Tompkins County adults are considered obese. Eighty-five, excuse me, eighty-seven percent of those that we surveyed and recognized good food as nutritious and tasteful. Yet fifty-three percent worry about the cost of healthy food when compared to processed canned and prepared frozen food. Sixty percent of our food is consumed at home and forty percent is prepared by others and eaten outside of our homes. And you should think of institutions when you think of the, of that forty percent, um, because they are a significant por- portion of our population. And responders to our survey said increasing access to healthy food was their highest food priority. This slide highlights food waste issues. Here in Ithaca and nationally as well, thirty-five percent of the food we buy is not eaten. We must do better. In Paul Hawkins' book Drawdown, food waste ranks number three for actions to reduce greenhouse gas. Locally, Huguenot Compost receives three point four million pounds of food annually to compost. At the same time, fourteen hundred pounds per day is saved locally from the waste bin by the Friendship Donations Network. From all the input we received from thousands of residents, we were able to discern three directions our community wants for a food system plan. Build resiliency, create equity and economic opportunity, and promote human and ecosystem health. This slide shows for each of the three directions, there are three goals. For the building resiliency is to mitigate and adapt to climate risks that affect the food system, to double local food production to sustain, sustainably meet community food needs, promote coordination and collaboration among food system stakeholders. And for cultivate equity and economic opportunity, to have food insecurity rates by increasing access to affordable nutritious food, grow land access and food production opportunities for those excluded communities in our, um, county. Create opportunities for entrepreneurship, innovation, and investment, and employment in the food economy. And to promote human and ecosystem health, protect natural resources by prioritizing climate smart practices, provide widespread opportunity for community participation in food reduction, food waste reduction and recovery. And finally, integrate broad nutritional support for a healthy population. For, in addition to all these goals, the food system plan has many recommendations attached to them. And I have pulled in the subsequent slides, uh, related recommendations to local governments that I wanted to share with you. So for the building resilience goal, goal number two, the double local food production, the rec- recommendation that could be impacted by local governments is to partner to develop a system to prioritize and protect land for food production. For goal number three, to promote coordination and collaboration among food system stakeholders, roles that local governments could play or integrate food system actions into existing community and government plans. And also increase participation, support, and investment of local governments, financial institutions, organizations, and businesses in the food system. For the direction to cultivate equity and economic, economic opportunity, goal number five, which is to grow land access and food production opportunities for the historically excluded communities. Local governments could partner with Tompkins County municipalities to strengthen land stewardship and um, in its supports. And to promote human ecosystem health and ecosystem health, goal number eight, to provide widespread opportunity for community participation in food waste reduction and recovery. Encourage municipal curbside food scrap collection. So I show this slide, which is the summary of the of our goals and directions. And this is actually the pledge, the Tocquees County Food System Pledge, that we're asking members of our community to sign. And so far, one hundred and eighty residents have signed this pledge. In addition, we have twenty-three businesses and organizations that have signed as well. So I'm hoping that you might, while you're looking at this slide, put your phone up to the QR code here. And it'll take you directly to the pledge on our website, where you can sign up. Or if your phone isn't easily accessible, which I find hard to believe, but if that is the case, you can always go to our website, Tocquees Food Future, enter the Get Involved tab and sign the pledge. We'd love to have members of this group, and maybe when you tell your friends and family, push us over the two hundred mark. And also make a direct appeal to all the local governments represented here that you pass municipal resolutions in support of the food system plan and authorize your leading official to sign the pledge. This would be a great testament to the support of the food system plan, and as we go around to raise funds for the implementation, showing this broad base of support is really critical.
Good, Don, the presentation slides are included with the meeting materials so that people could.
Right. Thanks for sharing that, Joe, and that reminder.
So people could dial it in.
I'm going to move on to the next slide. So when I give this presentation, many people ask what they can do personally. And because we're all buying food and making choices every day, there are things you can do. And those are described in the green column on the left. So I'll let you just quickly read through those, but please consider those as you're making your daily choices. The yellow box has suggestions for engaging differently with the food system. By resisting corporate foods with their ease and convenience and moving to a to centering your daily activity around food, like preparing meals with local fresh fruits and veggies. And this box also contains social justice actions. I put a note at the bottom of the slide, if, when you go to our food system plan, that you can access from our website. Page sixty-nine and seventy have pages of single-spaced ideas of things that you can do to support the food system plan. So how am I doing time-wise? I guess I'm doing reasonably well. So this is our last, my last slide, just to thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to your questions. And I think I'll stop sharing my screen so we can see each other's faces.
Great. Don, one of the things that has always jumped in my mind whenever I review all this fantastic information is the the problem that has persisted through my lifetime, which is that it's very difficult to making a living, providing food. And how, how, how is that addressed in the plan?
So the main way it's addressed is by increasing the amount of food that's purchased locally. So it's no secret that the large corporations have been reducing the cost of food by buying from large farmers and also driving the price down that they're willing to pay. And so that, and many of them, there's many strategies they have, such as when you go into a grocery store, the shelf space is bought up by large corporations, so local farmers don't have a place to get to sell their food in the local markets, except for the ones that are on the fringes. And those markets are paying higher prices because Walmart and other food purchasers are driving the price down, so those that are supplying raise the price to the smaller distributors. So the system is really being rigged against the local food production. We have to make a conscious effort through our food choices to buy locally. And in doing that, the more folks that are buying, and especially if we can get to the point where we are no longer having niche farmers, but we actually have moderate, medium-sized farms, and there are a couple of those in Tocquees County that are supplying the food system, then we have a better chance of having affordable food that's fresh and healthy. It's a great question, Joe. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I think Joe might have had his hand up for me, but anyway. Anyway.
Joe.
Mark, you can go ahead. That's fine. I can wait.
Okay. Thank you, Don. My question's about local governments and you had something, one of your points was prioritize and protect farmland, prime farmland. What's your recommendation for that? Do you have more specific guidance or suggestions?
These would be personal suggestions because the food system plan is trying to allow the players to develop solutions, and we're just putting forward the goals and so on and recommendations, but not trying to prescribe exactly how it happened. But I know that in your town, and might as well, that we're talking about land use regulation as a way to do that, so that's an obvious, obvious way, but there are many descriptions of what is a good land for growing food. And I'll have to say that that if you're trying to grow corn and soybeans, that those descriptions of prime farmland are probably adequate. But if you're trying to grow sheep or grazed beef, you don't need that same type of land to grow. And there are many good agricultural products that you can find in the forest. So these communities need to spend the time, and many of them have egg councils, to define what agriculture is in their community, what activity is taking place, and also work with Cornell and Department of Extension to understand other opportunities that are out there. And by encouraging and expanding markets, then folks will find a way to to supply food. And as we get into other food insecurity events, whether they're environmental, geopolitical, or things like a pandemic, we'll have to come up with new solutions, for sure. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Do you think, just kind of a follow-up, but maybe a separate question, is like so one advantage of local food production is that you don't have the transportation costs. So do you think that can offset some of the the price minimization that's done by, by large corporate firms?
Well, I think it does. Part of, part of the issue is to have markets where folks can go so that so the folks can find the local food. As I mentioned, whenever they go into a grocery store, they'd be hard-pressed to find local produce on the shelves. So we have to create markets. We do have the farmer's market, but the farmer's market is becoming more of a prepared food than you than it is for produce. So we have more work to do on providing markets. The other thing that's important, which you can find in our report, is that data has been gathered that shows that the average, the folks that are purchasing healthy nutritious food are spending eighteen hundred dollars less a year on healthcare than those that are buying over-processed food that comes in a can or has been frozen. And that's an important offset that folks are not taking into account. They're spending the money with the medical community and not with their local farmer. So there's a lot of education that needs to take place, and that's part of the work that we're doing with the implementation of the food system plan.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
So I've got both a question and a comment. My question is, how do you define healthy foods? Because I think of people defining it two different ways. One way is freshly prepared from real ingredients, and the other way is defining it as organic. And I can see a lot of people saying the organic stuff's far more too expensive. Can you hear me okay? I hear people saying that organic is far too expensive, and that's why they can't afford healthy food. I'm not sure how you're defining healthy food. I could see it go either way. And my comment is, you know, from landscaping, our biggest problem with farmland is people are covering up solar panels right now. And, you know, the state's coming in and saying, we have no choice, we're going to put a solar farm here, and if they farm it, it'll produce, it'll turn into a solar panel plant. And personally, I'd rather eat than have lights on. But the choice we're saying is, we're having the lights on, and we'll figure out some other way.
All right, Joe, you've got a couple of things here. Let me talk to your first comment about eating healthy food. Healthy food in general will be food that is fresh and has not been over-processed, although it is possible for local farmers to be putting chemicals in that are not in our best interest, but because you typically see those farmers at the food stand, and they're very known in the community, we see very little of that activity happening locally. The question about organic being more expensive, there are certain protocols and procedures needed to be certified organic, and they often preclude people from getting the organic certification. I'm a case in point. I do not have organic certification, although I've had my farm for thirty-five years, and I've never used any chemicals, herbicides, or pesticides on my farm, but I'm not certified. Because I eat the food that I grow, so it's important that I I treat my land and my crops properly. And I think you're going to find that most of the local farmers are in that same in that same perspective. So I would go for local, but the main thing is to be eating a whole food, a plant-based diet, focusing on that aspect. Will do a lot to keep you from eating concentrated foods that are concentrated, chemicals and so on, like beef and other meat products do. And then the issue of solar panels. As I mentioned, ninety-four percent of the land in Tocquees County that's used for agriculture grows food for animals and not for humans. And so the solar panels are displacing land that's used to grow food for animals, then it's really not having much of an impact on humans. And the issue of how many solar panels and how we deal with that is one that hopefully members of Teacock are wrestling with, and maybe collectively or at least individually in your towns, about what the proper ratio is and how you want your land use to be considered with industrial activity like solar panels or agriculture or mix.
Well, actually, we don't have a choice in it because the state is overriding that choice. And they're overriding all of the laws inside. The state will place solar panels wherever they want to.
Sorry, I missed that, Joe. I'm not able to hear that properly.
All right. The state is overriding the locals on this. They're putting solar panels wherever they want to, and we have no say of it.
Yep. So with the state overriding, we just mentioned that both our senator and our assemblywoman are on the state agriculture committees. And I will have to say that the Food Policy Council has met with both of them in the recent months, and they are very interested in receiving input about agriculture. So don't be afraid to share your opinions, either as individuals or as municipal entities with them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, if I might, another comment, one of the impediments to profitability is the paucity of processing ability. And that's, I tend to plan some places, and not, you know, how do we address, you know, slaughterhouses and, and, you know, canneries, community kitchens. All these ways to add value, you know, maybe a nut processing facility, all these things could be done that would enable scaling up of, of, you know, of production if it were done in a sort of cooperative way and expanding the markets accordingly.
Joe, we're going to need to have you be speaking for our food system plan. That's exactly the type of activity that needs to take place and is identified in the plan to grow the infrastructure to need to process foods. And the cooperative venture is exactly the way that the smaller farms are going to be able to make this happen and allow them to then move into more moderate-sized farms where the farmer or some aspects of their crew can be full-time working on the farm as opposed to, as opposed to part-time. So we've identified several different processing, and you mentioned meat, slaughterhouses and so on, which many, most farmers are having to get in the queue over a year in advance, which means the lambs that aren't even born yet are already in the queue to be slaughtered. So the system is, there's a crying need locally. And so local governments and economic development can definitely play a role to increase our food system and its resilience right here in Tocquees County.
Yeah, and at the federal level, of course, they've got all kinds of subsidies that make it possible to create the competitive not particularly nutritious products. Is there a role for government in sort of balancing the equation a little bit by facilitating the, you know, the creation of some of these local marketing routes?
There is. Whenever local governments are having planning sessions or you're working with your your egg committees, those are exactly the questions that should be brought forward with the local community and then brought to the county and to the economic development forces that are taking place. I will say that we're looking to get grant writing support for farmers and processors, because there are lots of opportunities that are available out there, but the list is three pages long, single-spaced of opportunities, which is a lot to work through. And we're trying to come up with support so that we can get, we can access those grants that are out there.
Is that all on page sixty-nine and seventy of the plan?
There you go.
Well, I think Bob Lynch has his hand up in the gallery at the chambers.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see that. Yes.
Thank you very much, Don, for your report. It's very helpful. We're looking at a roadmap for the future. I'm getting impatient. I'm wondering when we're going to start driving and riding the road. And I say that because I volunteer once a week at the Enfield Food Pantry. Our pantry is serving often more than six hundred families a week. Multiply that by three, four, or five people, and you see the thousands that we serve. We're operating out of a cramped nineteen forty-eight era firehouse converted fort. We don't have enough space. We don't have enough freezer space, refrigerator space. I know that for a fact. I tried to stuff as much stuff into the freezer and refrigerator this week, and there was not enough room for everything. We've got the customers, the shoppers. We also have been blessed with a supply, but we're having an infrastructure problem. That's the weak link right now. Our town board in Enfield spent forty-five thousand dollars in ARPA money for helping the Enfield Food Pantry buy the land for a new site. We've had limited cooperation from other levels of government. And I won't go into that today. It's well-known, my advocacy on that. But I'm a little impatient. I want to see something that will actually be more the nice words and aspirations, and maybe something that will actually make some progress.
Well, I will have to say that your impatience is shared by me as well. So you may be interested, and you're welcome to join. The Food Policy Council meets every month on the third Friday at nine o'clock at the table that you're sitting at. And we have been reporting to the Peak Committee, because I see Anne Corman in the room, so we've been reporting out to her what the work that we're doing. We do have Randy Brown from the county legislature that sits on the Food Policy Council. So we've identified fifteen priorities for two thousand and twenty-three. So we've identified fifteen priorities for two thousand and twenty three. And working with the food pantries is one of them. And we get report outs about every two or three months on the activities that are taking place. So I know there's a grant that's been applied for, to support the, the food pantries. But it's not the infrastructure support that you, that you're asking about. So we're very much aware of it. And in a recent conversation with both Anna Callis and with Senator Webb, we've made this point known, and they were really quite surprised to learn of the about how many people are being served by the food pantries and how many people are, are not participating in the SNAP program, that our system is somewhat broken and we need to spend, we need to really be focusing on, on changing the dynamics. So so, but you're welcome to attend our meeting. We are working. There's, on this end, there's many organizations that are engaged. And we're growing each month with more people attending.
I would like to attend. Thank you.
Yep.
And can you mention again when that, when that meeting is?
Sure. It is the third Friday of the month at nine o'clock in the legislature's chamber. And if you contact me, you, I can send you the link if you want to attend by Zoom because the meetings are hybrid, of course.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'd love to have municipal officials joining. The only one we currently have is, is Randy Brown. So that'd be great.
Don, Mike, got a question. Are you, the pantries are great. And are there people using the pantry that could be on SNAP and aren't? So that they'd get more help? Or you think everybody that comes to the pantry that's eligible for SNAP is using it? Because you're saying a big portion of the eligible people aren't using it.
So I actually don't know the answer, but our friend in the legislative chambers, I'm sure does know the answer to that question.
No, I was just wondering if that, the pantry services people so greatly, I just wondered if they could also help more by educating people that are eligible for SNAP that just don't know it or appreciate it. That they qualify, they go to the pantry and get food, you know.
So that there are people that come to the Caroline pantry that are not on food stamps. And there have been discussions about how to engage folks that are not on food staff into the, into the system. From what I'm understanding is getting into the system is a little bit tricky and you have to really be stay with the process in order to get, to get into it. But also that DSS is so short-staffed that they're having a hard time processing. So we have, we have bigger, we have pretty big issues to work on here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there somebody else who had their hand up? I didn't see.
I did, Joel, but I had the question about SNAP. So Mike really addressed it. That seemed like low hanging fruit, but I guess it's not from what Don said.
Yeah, we have structural issues around it that are, are blocking us. And we've provided a couple of recommendations, but the short staffing at DSS has really made, made it difficult.
Thank you.
As I listen to this conversation, it occurs to me that this is often the same, a bit of the same issue that we are facing in terms of getting individuals who are currently unhoused and connecting them with services. The application process is daunting. It's very long and complex. In many ways, they're repetitive and frustrating. I know that there was a talk to have sort of a, a one-stop system where you apply once and then you can apply for different programs through the system. I haven't, this is through the continuum of care. So perhaps this is a conversation that could be had with the continuum of care to see if there are connections that can be made in order to provide access to SNAP and food stamps. You know, I also recognize that when I was on the working group that was looking at having Tompkins County be a living wage county, one of the things that we were examining was the benefits threshold. Once you receive income at a certain level, then suddenly your access to benefits starts dropping off. And so you may end up with people who are sort of right on that cusp and aren't, are no longer eligible, but definitely still need the services and might be using the food pantry in that way. So I, I think I see different ways where these interests overlap. And perhaps having a broader conversation with the continuum of care as well as those who've been working on the living wage research might be helpful.
Thank you for that information about continuum of care. I was not aware of that, so I'll look into it. Thank you.
Mike?
I guess when you're talking about it's complex to get into it and some of the people who probably need it, it makes it even harder for them to deal with it. I think it's great service that at tax time that there's volunteer, older people or other people that help people fill out their taxes. I wonder if an organization could be to help people sign up for SNAP or these other things. And some older organization communities or something, I don't know how they organize the volunteer helping tax, but it's great. I see it advertised and it's, it's wonderful thing.
I wonder if the town clerks could play a role here.
Now, and I do want to say that obviously the best way to address the homelessness problem is to keep people in housing. Right? So if you have individuals who are economically on the margins, which, you know, we are talking about that same population, the, the, the more that we can provide services and provide resources and get people supported while they are still in housing, whether or not we're providing access to healthcare or food and, and other resources, that stability that, or those services that we can provide on the front end is more likely to keep people in housing. And so we don't end up with a homelessness problem. But so many people who are on the edge economically aren't aware of the resources that are available to them. They're obviously have a lot on their mind. There's a lot of stress. And it's a very, very bureaucratic process to go through. People were joking that I think it's something like a thirty-page application process. It almost result, requires a master's degree just to complete it. And the idea that you might have to do it again and again for different services is just daunting. So I, I really like the idea of how can we push these connections out so people can have access to resources earlier in their economically maybe vulnerable state so that we can keep them stable as long as possible.
If you push that kind of mission out on a website, but the people who need it the most probably don't have access to the websites.
Or the bandwidth to look for it there.
Right. These problems exist for reasons.
I, I'm pretty sure the, I'm pretty sure that the Ithaca food, food let me call it, dogs and fishes, those have people who sit there during the meals and helps people with social services stuff, getting them hooked up with the right people and such. So there is a little bit going on, but there always can be more.
Yeah, that's true. There is one thing that they do, which is a really good service to those people who need it. Other questions for Don?
I'll just make a shameless plug again. For folks to consider signing the Food System Pledge and considering your municipality as well, join on. You can see that the food system intersects in so many ways with our, with our lives. And having something that's resilient and healthy and equitable is so important to our community's character. So thank you for this opportunity. It's good to see everyone and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
To which point, that brings us to our second big topic of the day, which is the role of reuse. Well, it's, it's broader. It's the, it's the, the whole management plan. And, and how we can be enhanced. And a part of that is letting Diane pitch all the good stuff that she's doing. Diane, could you do that?
Sure. I'm all of a sudden having trouble with my camera and I'm worried about my internet connection. I thought on the agenda, I saw that Kat might be given a brief thing first.
I was expecting her here. You're in the legislative chamber?
I actually am on a.
Now I see you.
Okay. I, I apologize. I'm going to briefly log off and see if I can get my camera to work while Kat starts.
Yeah. Well, Kat, we had, we had shared with us the, the, the YouTube of the county meeting you had at the library. And, and your excellent presentation of, of the highlights of the, of the plan. So I, I'm hoping that most of the people here have had a chance to at least catch that highlighted portion, which was shared with folks. Would you like to highlight the highlights?
Sure. Yeah, I can do a very, very brief highlight of the highlights. So our draft plan, Rethinking Waste in Tompkins County, Fostering a Local Circular Economy, is a, a plan that's required by the state to be developed. It covers a ten-year period from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two. I, as Joel mentioned, there was a presentation that was shared through link in advance. And I will be doing a presentation to the legislature on August first. So if folks are, you know, missed that, you can either check out the, the video recording or that's another upcoming presentation on the plan. It is, the idea is to evaluate current materials management practices in Tompkins County, as well as look at projections for waste about disposal and reduction over that timeframe. I, the implementation of that plan really looks at full community engagement, recognizing the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in implementation of any sort of plan that we would be moving forward with, as well as understanding that there's need for engagement of stakeholders throughout the whole process. So we do have public comment open for this, and we're looking forward to today's conversation as well to, to hear, hear thoughts on the plan, but we are encouraging folks, if they have thoughts, to share them in writing through public comment as well. Just real quick, through this plan, we're really leaning into the four R programming to increase diversion. So reduce, reuse, recycle, and rethink. There's tremendous opportunity to foster a local circular economy where materials are used for the highest and best value for as long as possible. And products at their end of life can become feedstocks or inputs for new systems. And this takes a holistic approach to materials management, looking for opportunities to reduce and reuse prior to recycling and rethink waste to redesign systems that create a positive feedback loop for managing waste. So I can dig a little bit more in if you're interested in hearing a little bit more about some of the highlights of the strategies. But I know we also, a little bit time constricted. If Diane's ready, I can hand it over to her as well.
Yeah. And are you, Diane?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Thanks, Kat. And I, I'm really glad you're here and I'm going to try to share my screen and I'm concerned about my, my technical setup. I'm actually in New Jersey right now, so. So we'll, we'll see what happens here. Okay, let's see if I can get this to go without losing you guys. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
So I'm going to go very quickly and lightly over this, but yes, the, the local solid waste management plan and is really exciting. And I think part of it is New York State also just had its plan open for public comments and through May or early June. And both the local plan that Kat has done so much work on and the New York State plan have circular economy in the title of the plan. And if you read the definition of, of, you know, there are many definitions of circular economy, but reuse is a central component of that. So I just want to give a brief history of Finger Lakes reuse and just try to have you imagine with me, you know, where we might go next, because Tompkins County, because of Barb Ekstrom's work, because of its really progressive steps it's taken in materials management, is really perceived as a leader in New York State. And I think we continue to have the opportunity to lead. And, you know, I'd like to see some of this solidified in the plan. And, you know, which as Kat said, is open for comment for another week and a half or so. Or two weeks, something like that. So Finger Lakes Reuse was founded back in two thousand and seven. We were incorporated. And, and our mission is a triple bottom line mission, meaning we're taking kind of an enterprise business approach to the activity of reuse. So to enhance community, economy, and environment through reuse, like the triple bottom line of people, planet, profit. We're founding goals because the mission is, is very broad and may seem intangible are to, and have never changed, to reduce waste, relieve poverty, and teach skills through reuse activities. And our, our vision is of a just, resilient, and waste-free world that values both people and resources. So when we started getting into this work, we all realized that really this, this work is about the people, human health and wellbeing. And, and so while keeping stuff out of the landfill is, is really important, the, the activity of that can be truly empowering in the process and provide all sorts of relief and access to wealth, et cetera. So a quick timeline here, I'm actually, I've got another one, so I'm going to kind of skip through this. But I know this was included in your agenda packets as well. Last year, we did two point four million dollars in sales. We received forty five thousand dollars, I'm sorry, forty five thousand drop-off donations. Those are vehicles dropping off donations. That's not the number of items, and it doesn't actually include the, the number of items we went out and picked up. We sold seven hundred and fifty thousand items in twenty twenty-two. And we provided over a hundred thousand dollars in store credit vouchers to four hundred and eighty households through referrals with, we partnered with a lot of human service agencies and twenty-six last year. We've been growing at an average of twenty percent each year. We now have eighty employees, ten apprentices, and this summer we have twenty-eight youth workers through the Youth Employment Services and Summer Youth Employment Program. And last year we collected and paid a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in, in sales tax, half of which goes to Tompkins County. So, you know, I put this top quote here because I want to make sure people realize the history that Tompkins County is the, really wanted to have a reuse center. It was in its, well, it was in its twenty-year solid waste management plan that was approved in nineteen ninety-five. And so, and I, I pulled that quote out of some early research we did that, Kat, when you and I first met back in two thousand and six. Kat was a central partner of the, the initial planning of the reuse center. And that's, that plan is available on our website that kind of informed our business plan. I think we call it a pre-business plan, but we did lots and lots of surveys of consumers and generators of materials. We, we had our first meeting in December two thousand and five, incorporated in two thousand and seven, and in November two thousand and eight, opened our first reuse center at Trip Hammer Marketplace. Then we doubled in size in two thousand and ten and we got into computers and electronics. We called it the E Center. We've since joined those two spaces together. And then in, in two thousand and twelve, we launched our version of Repair Cafe back when that made the news. And about five different people from the community forwarded the New York Times article about it. And so unlike typical repair cafes that pop up and are often monthly, ours has been weekly. COVID did disrupt it in two thousand and twenty, and we moved it up to Trip Hammer and reopened it earlier this year or late last year, actually. So every Saturday afternoon, anyone from the public can bring items for free to get their stuff repaired. When we opened the E Center in, in two thousand and ten and, and got into electronics and, and computers, the tidal wave of electronics that came at us was really, really daunting. Everybody had been saving it up. Nobody had wanted to throw that stuff away. There really wasn't a clear avenue. And so we were truly overwhelmed and started trying to plan for a, a way to have a workforce that could actually handle it. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we launched our reset job training program, which was a mutual benefit program to have people who were maybe looking to build skills for different careers come in and help us and learn how to refurbish computers and check all the components and peripherals. And in exchange, they help us achieve our mission. In exchange, they build some skills in a, in a career. And, and so that has been a really successful program that's been going ever since. COVID did disrupt that too, but we've got, we don't have the tech program back up and running, but we started a reentry program. I, I can't remember what year, actually. I I can't remember what year actually, but uh, we have a a rolling start date for people who are re-entering from incarceration or addiction. And uh, and so that's been going ever since. Um, then we we purchased the Ethka Reuse Center building in twenty fifteen. In twenty twenty, we doubled in size again at Trip Hammer, and we opened our um uh, the reuse, what we call the reuse mega center, which is thirty thousand square feet of uh retail. Um, we've won a number of awards. I won't go through the um each one, but particularly proud of the Alcohol and Drug Council's um recovery-friendly employer of the year. We do really try to create space for people who are trying to rebuild their lives. Um, and uh, very briefly, uh, there is, uh, this is also available on our website. There's a link here, and I think that would be live in your in your agenda packet to this economic uh impact analysis that um we worked with Cornell last year on, and Tom Knight was the the teacher of that. Um, and just a couple of highlights, um, over the last five years, uh, done um almost eight point seven million dollars in sales. Uh, so the county, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in sales tax, uh diverted um nearly ten million pounds from the landfill, and we've recirc- circulated two point eight million items. Um, and there's lots more in that economic impact analysis. What are we selling? This is kind of the breakdown. Our biggest department in sales, this is twenty twenty-two numbers, household goods. Um, our largest department, if we were selling in both locations or had another local outlet, would be clothing. Uh, uh, building materials. Um, again, we also don't really have quite the right facility. Um, there's some stories behind that, and then we do furniture, electronics, computers, um, books and media as well. Um, these are the last five years of sales. Um, and uh I'm I'm not gonna go into great detail about that. Um, but we are um in twenty twenty-three. We're working with um, I think we just, I just got some numbers. I think we have um, uh, we we have less staff than we did uh at this time last year. So we're doing more business, we're handling more materials, but um, I can go into that. Uh, I think in a minute. This is our, this is how our our revenue is broken down. The blue line is earned revenue through sales and service fees. Um, and then the gold line is um grants, government contracts, including with the county, um, individual giving. And so you can see in in twenty fifteen, when we um opened the Ethka Reuse Center, had even more visible space than at Trip Hammer Marketplace, uh, how our sales uh began to really progress and we, you know, and I I and are an increasing component of our enterprise. Um, and I think this uh chart shows our our greatest challenge. So the gold line here is the average daily donation drop-offs that we're receiving. And the blue line is the number of employees, paid employees that we have, and the green dotted line is the FTEs. So you can see that the, our our paid labor is not keeping up with the public engagement. Um, and that's causing us tremendous strain. Um, but we're also able to leverage some growth out of that. But I, oh yeah, it says fifty-four point three here at the end of twenty twenty-three. I think we have um, we have under F uh fifty FTE right now. I think it's forty-nine or something. I know that our, uh, let's see, our our staffing overall is down about seventeen percent. Our um, our our operation staffing and our administrative staffing is down twenty percent over last year, because we've been really trying to uh rein in expenses so we can keep uh in balance, and it continues to be a challenge as the public continues to bring us more. Um, then I just wanted to compare, often reuse and recycling are conflated, but they are very, very different from an environmental pers- uh, perspective, from an economic, especially local economic impact. Um, so this, this chart, these are numbers published on the Northeast Recycling Council's website. This is showing since April twenty nineteen, what the um value per ton that's being uh the on the market for recyclable materials. So that's, you know, metal, glass, plastic, textiles, fiber, which is cardboard, et cetera. So these are the aggregated values, and you know, there was a little bit of a happier peak, you know, and it, you know, April twenty twenty-one, and in the, I guess that's the uh, and then in twenty twenty-two. But it's been going down, and I don't know where it is. This goes through the end of um last year. But you know, seventy to a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton is the return for recycling and commodities. But what we're selling through our cash registers is at least two thousand dollars a ton. We actually, it's, it's we think it's twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars a ton, but we wanted to be conservative here, but there's and and those dollars stay in the community as opposed to how the recycling markets are. Um, so just wanted to compare that. And there's, you know, continued enormous volumes of reusable materials still going into dumpsters locally, so um, you know, reuse is a way, and this is something that we're gonna try to um add in our comments to the plan, that we can really engage people in the uh, the urgency of the climate crisis, the 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 carbon that is embodied in a lot of these materials that are just tossed, mainly because there's not an easy system to divert them, so. Uh, you know, th- this is a really great way to engage and educate people who may not even be measured in the um unemployment statistics, people who have given up on applying, and so therefore are not counted. Um, and we're doing a a pretty good job um uh creating opportunities for people who have really uh detached in in all sorts of ways from society. So I think reuse can be, you know, more than just keeping stuff out of the landfill. There's economic development, there's social justice, environmental justice issues as well. We're gonna flip through a few, there's Kat, denailing, remember Kat? Um, and uh this is just, you know, the workforce, there's, there's just great varieties of um activities to do in the activity of reuse, not to mention in our reuse centers. Uh, this is a couple shots of uh uh this was a kids' fix event. This was our Ethica Fixers Collective right before COVID. We had a couple of incredibly popular kids' fix events. We said, hey, bring your toys or just come help work on anything. And what I love the most is the intergenerational exchange of skills um that can really help build community resilience. And uh finally, just in these pictures, um, the opportunity to do creative reuse to to um foster creativity in our community uh is tremendous. There's so many materials that maybe not immediately reusable, but with some creativity really could be. So I think this is my last slide, just to kind of butter up some conversation here. So this, the plan is open for comment until August seventh. Um, I, you know, I believe that uh there's a, I I believe that this is true, that the the county's solid waste contract uh extension or bid process is gonna be in May twenty twenty-four. Um, I would love to see some intentional um, something in the plan that can help guide uh challenging the waste handler who wins the bid to start reducing waste through reuse and start setting some goals. And so that's something that would love to try to get on the table. Um, also, you know, clarifying when this larger hub, which is an idea that we have proposed and and is in the plan, there's a lot of great stuff in this plan. I haven't said enough good things. There's um it lists reuse as a communication and public education outpost for for reuse or for um waste reduction education. So we're really happy that that's listed in there. Um, you know, we're we're central to the circular economy, and I'm really glad that it's in the title of this plan. And this hub and exchange kind of concept, where an exchange doesn't have to be a nonprofit thrift store or Finger Lakes reuse, it could be um like found, or it can be for-profit enterprises. And the hub is a much larger warehouse where we really can house the volume of material so that we could actually have an impact for institutions like Cornell or Cuba Medical um, that have these much larger volumes that our capacity is saturated. But we know that there are markets, and if the markets aren't here in this local community, very likely we could satisfy most of the supply of reusable materials in our surrounding counties who are not nearly as wealthy as we are. Um, and then, you know, currently, our waste is all traveling to Ontario. Most of our waste is traveling to Ontario County landfill, but they have um voted to close that in theory in twenty twenty-eight, so that's five years away. And so we'll, we will have to be looking for other options. And our options for materials are, for waste materials are either to bury them or burn them. I know that that's not the technical terms used by the industry, but but those are the two unhappy solutions right now. And so I, you know, I believe Tompkins County is in and it a a position to um, filter out much more effectively the reusable materials that are mixed in in dumpsters and uh, you know, going to the landfill right now. So uh, this has been very much a a collaborative effort. Um, there's, um, I believe there's uh, a a strong opportunity to um not just have a waste management focus on um, uh, uh, reducing waste. But I think that there's a workforce development and economic development. There's, there's a multi-sector approach to this, which is something else. I I'm not quite clear how to articulate in the solid waste management plan, but I do think having an intentional I I don't know, awareness stated in the plan that this is beyond just trying to keep things out of the landfill, and the other positive impacts are there. I think that there is some language, I I love the D E and I um, uh, uh acknowledgement that's that's in the plan. Um, but I think that we could add some more specifics about that. So um, I'm gonna stop sharing. But you know, I'm hoping that this will trigger some conversation and some questions about how we might be able to do that. And for whatever reason, I can't get my camera to work. I apologize.
We hear you, okay.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad.
You're, you're, you, the tail end of your presentation, you're sort of raised a question um that, that uh that hub. How does that happen?
Yeah, I I didn't explain that very clearly, so that what the, um, so the reuse center has forty-five thousand square feet of of operating area, but we've also uh since twenty twenty, started um leasing warehouse space. And we have, right now, today, we have over seven hundred pallets of material in storage. Last year, we sent, I'd say between twenty and twenty-five tractor trailers at fifty pallets of trailer load. So over a thousand pallets of materials went into out-of-state markets, where it's very opaque what actually happens. We sold them for pennies on the dollar. We could have you know, at our prices, which are pretty low, could have gotten at least ten times what we sold these tractor trailer loads for. But what we're trying to do is demonstrate that there's, you know, we're just passively receiving this enormous volume. And meanwhile, Zero Waste Ethica did a dumpster study in College Town that's on their website in twenty twenty-two. If you look at the photos of what is uh still being thrown away in spite of us being open for donations fifty-two weeks a year, in spite of the dump-and-run effort that um, you know, deals with thousands and thousands of items. And I actually, I I I do think Cornell is very interested in, you know, and Cornell is not a single entity, right? There's, there's different different avenues to go through this, but I think that there is some strong interest, particularly among the students and also some of the uh professors we've been talking to about trying to create a more uh effective system for students to have a a better choice than the dumpster. Um, and so, you know, waste, waste management is collection, sorting, and bringing stuff to market. So the recycling, the bringing glass, uh cardboard, you know, these large bulk items, but I think reuse gets um it it's not considered because it's labor-intensive, so that means expensive, right? So um, but but the return, um, what we're kind of exploring is, you know, could we be a collector of this material and then a wholesaler to all sorts of startup enterprises? And so that's where the hub comes in. You need to have, let's just imagine a gigantic warehouse um that could have um larger scale, larger volume material. So uh uh, um, and then, and then a distribution set system that goes to markets, like um, I got a text today about file cabinets. They're going into a dumpster. Um, there's a lot of file cabinets. A lot of people are downsizing, but we sell, we sell hundreds of filing cabinets every year. Um, and I think that there's probably other markets, and that's just one. Um, I I got an email from Grassroots today that they um were cleaning up and they had you know, uh, they wanna do a partnership next year because they were horrified at the stuff that they threw in the dumpster. Yeah, they had a lot of broken lawn chairs, but there were many, many that were perfectly good. There were tents, there were tent poles, there, you know, it's just uh, I mean, just today, yeah, and um oh. Yeah, so, so the the infrastructure that we've been kind of starting to propose, but um, we're hoping that can be more integrated into the plan, and it is um uh, a a way to partner with the institutions and partner with the waste, you know, the the contracting main waste collection uh company. Right now, it's Casella, to challenge them to work with us to help divert those materials. And so um, you know, I I I I think that there's interest. We um are are, we're in conversations with Seneca Meadows. They're not a collector. Um, you know, they're a receptacle. But they're very interested in seeing if they could contribute to a system that could help divert some of the stuff that doesn't need to be buried. They understand that they have, you know, limited capacity, even though they're working to um significantly expand. I mean, they're saying that, you know, this enormous expansion is a fifteen-to-twenty-five-year solution, and then what? So I, you know, I think being able to set up the system that could help better collect, sort, and get to market many of these materials that we've been demonstrating were saturated and overwhelmed. Uh, but it's not because there isn't a market. The pinch point has been our ability to get it onto the shelves. And you know, a lot of it is our own aging infrastructures, old trucks, et cetera. We are expecting some funding from Anna Callis to help us get uh, some new trucks, et cetera, but um, but still, uh, we're uh, n- not operating on all cylinders right now, and we also are not even though it's nice that we exist, we're still only getting a portion of the potentially reusable materials in this community uh back into markets.
Yeah, did you wanna comment?
Thanks, Joel. Yes, thanks, Diane, for the presentation at uh the county's uh peak meeting, Planning, Energy, and Environmental Quality Committee. We also recently had a presentation from Crowd, which is look looking at construction materials. And so I think that's another huge area to look at. Uh, so you can look at our last uh meeting, if you wanna look at that presentation. The um, a majority of the but the bu- the majority of the uh material going into landfills has to do with building either construction or deconstruction, well, demolition, really. And so that is an area that I'm hoping that this, that this group can help us look at, because this is not gonna involve just the county doing stuff. And and as, you know, Diane mentioned, uh, that's in the plan regarding like rural exchanges. There's things that are going to, I I think uh uh, matter, for instance, whether it's building uh uh, building codes for municipalities that you're possibly looking at requiring certain uh things when people are either building and recycling materials. If you ever go look at the 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 waste that happens onsite, some of it goes to, for instance, reuse, if they can handle it. If they have like extra windows or some extra building materials, sometimes it'll go over there, but a lot of that goes in the dumpsters when we don't have a system to set up to deconstruct buildings yet and and recapture the materials. We uh, we have set up uh uh, some salvage of materials when people say deconstruct around this county. Really, it's just you're primarily going in, except there's been a couple instances where Ethica uh where uh reuse has helped salvage a couple of buildings. But typically, it's just going in and salvaging some of the components. So those are huge areas that I'm hoping again, this group can help us figure out where that group of people to work on this issue would help us figure out what to do, because we, the county doesn't want to tell people how to do it. Uh, doesn't, I I I'll speak just from my point of view. We don't wanna tell everybody how to do it. This is something we need to figure out together going forward. Um, I have to leave, but I'm gonna tune in uh on Zoom. Uh, I'll be driving, but I'll I'll tune in for the rest of the meeting.
I was just gonna say um, thanks, Anne, for that. And you know, I I think an enterprise approach to this, like helping start businesses that, not necessarily nonprofits, that can businesses that not necessarily nonprofits that can help do trade in some of these materials as part of it. There's, you know, the Ithaca Times had to cover what to do with the empty storefronts. Um there's a huge variety. Yes, building materials are forty percent of the uh forty to fifty percent of the nation's waste stream. They're a huge chunk of it. But there's, you know, I'm looking at the whole hundred percent and there's many, many different enterprises. Um I I think there's some good movement and there's going to be some good support for building material reuse. Coming out of New York State. Um so I I think that's really exciting, uh but I think uh uh an enterprise approach is something and it's it's multi-sector. It's not just, that shouldn't just come out of the waste. That that should come out of economic development. Um and you know, I think it should be encouraged to get more reuse businesses and small enterprises up and running.
And I'll just add into that too, that um there is a tremendous amount of workforce development opportunity, especially around reuse. I think another component with the deconstruction and what was mentioned is also thinking about demonstration projects or providing technical assistance and support in understanding kind of what that looks like in the community. Um you know, are there buildings that need to come down or need some some soft strip out where materials are being pulled for reuse before before disassembly? So I think there's a lot, a full spectrum of that, and certainly with the plan, it is engaging and looking at kind of the whole spectrum of reuse from building materials to dishware to thinking about, you know, these wholesale hubs and entrepreneurial opportunities, engaging people with creative reuse. I think there's a lot too there with messaging and also with thinking about the waste in the first place and why it's being generated. So you know, when you're thinking about the generation of materials as far as things that are coming into the community, are they things that need to be here in the first place before they even need to be directed for reuse?
And and one of the things that that uh figures in here is that if if uh if if somebody's inclined to want to uh engage in, you know, in in not throwing things out, um making it easy or easier uh would help encourage that. Uh you know, and I've had, I mean, I've been in construction for most of my life and, you know, I I do it. But you know, the other people tell me it's just just too much trouble, you know? Even even easy stuff, you know, but if we tell, if we if we had some way of 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 making it easier to, you know, to 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 divert um stuff from being disposed of, that would help. Um as you say, some of it's education, but some of it's also just, you know, reducing the hassle.
Yeah, that's the type of thing that, you know, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done around that. And that's that's one of the questions I have is how can we support the um you know, this this effort and this plan um as a community to like bring together some of the experts that are talking about um uh successful cases in other communities. There's there's the, there's a big transformation happening nationwide. Um Tompkins County has definitely looked to as a leader. Um but there's also a whole bunch of um, you know, like this infrastructure consideration. Um it I think there's a lot to explore and there's a lot of um possible pilots, et cetera. So somehow engaging the community to help support that. There's a crowd, you know, that Ann Corman mentioned, has been really focused on building materials and collecting different cases. Um they could provide a lot of technical assistance, but there's no formal way to do that at this time to help work on these issues in an ongoing way. Um you know, this this local plan is really important, but it's just one marker and it's a framework. Um but then there's the continual activity of trying to figure out kind of developing these new markets, uh creating this new infrastructure that's not a small piece um and creating these systems that will help a Cornell student not choose the dumpster, right? So what what could that receptacle look like? That we can work with landlords with with the dormitories, et cetera, to help them have a different option that's equally convenient, just like having that recycling container next to the trash can.
Um I'm not sure who was first, Caitlin or Joe? This time. Joe?
Oh, sure. Um one of the things that I really see um dealing with um, you know, as a reuser in the used book business is people die, people move, and they've got two weeks to empty the house. And when you have two weeks to empty the house, maybe you'll get me and maybe you'll get pastimes in or an antique place. And then everything else goes in the dumpster. And it's because they have such a timeframe to get stuff out and they don't have a place to turn to who will come and empty the house out of perfectly usable dishes, perfectly usable furniture. Um you know, office supplies, all this sort of stuff that goes straight to the dumpster because of that time pressure of the house has to be emptied by the end.
Very good point. So does that point to any particular solution, Joe?
I think I think we need to find a system to make it easier to donate this stuff into reuse than to put it in a dumpster. You know, even if we can, you know, set up a pod and you just pile stuff in the pod and that goes to reuse as a center or something like that, but there's got to be a system where if I'm in a time crunch, I've got two weeks to empty this house out entirely, I have a way that is as easy as the dumpster, because if you don't make it as easy and quick as the dumpster, the dumpster wins.
Mm-hmm. Um Caitlin?
Hi, thank you. Um I it's a it's a good pivot point because I think the dumpster is winning with a lot of recyclables currently. And I live out in the country and a lot of my neighbors don't use Tompkins County trash for pickup. They're using, you know, in my neighborhood, um they have dumpsters that multiple families will share, multiple households will share. Because there's there's been a problem in, anecdotally, I know that, you know, sometimes you put stuff out that isn't accepted and the list of what is accepted at any given point changes and things get rejected and you can get letters if you're putting stuff in your recycling and you're not supposed to. And for me, I so I grew up in Southern California. And where I'm from, um at this point, we now, they have single, they have single-source recycling. So all the things that could be recycled go into a single container and then they go to a sorting facility. And what it increases the the amount that people recycle considerably. The where my mom lives now, they're even collecting at the roadside, they're collecting um food waste and compost. They're making it as easy as possible to put as fewer things in your trash can that when you have these other good systems in place. Now, she lives in a far denser environment, so it's not as easy to replicate necessarily in a rural environment. But I would throw that out there. The other thing I would say is a couple things. So I teach the Sustainability Preservation Course at Cornell. And um I teach in the planning department in person intermittently, but this is an online class and I have students from all over the world now um and across the country who are participating in this course. And um what I would say is that there are, there are some very specific things that local communities can do to improve sustainability um and improve the the methods that we are that we are incentivizing what we actually want to see, right? We want to see fewer fewer people taking displaced in their homes. Let's think about fewer things in the homes displaced in the first place. And so we like to think of ourselves as a relative, as a as a green area. But the reality is is we can't build our way to a sustainable future. The greenest building is the one already standing. So making those buildings reused in the most effective means possible, it doesn't mean every building gets saved. And I don't say it just as a preservationist, but purely from an environmental materiality standpoint, there's so much carbon loss in destroying a building. It can take on average about eighty years to recapture the energy loss of a previously functional or useful building that was replaced with a new building. That's not, that's not a good approach. So in the way, the same way we want to reuse individual materials, we really need to be thinking as municipalities of how we can incentivize the continued reuse of our existing buildings. Obviously, new construction needs to happen and needs to augment growth. But preventing those things from being thrown away in the first place um is is frankly the best way we can, we can get towards um moving forward. And that might in some ways look different in a in a more dense environment. Having landlords provide things like, the ones I see out all the time are are microwaves. There are microwaves, you know, you see them put out at the at the at the bit at the side for Cornell, for Cornell kids. You know, if we could encourage landlords to keep that as like as a standard feature in apartments, it's a small thing, but it might mean that we see fewer of that type of thing hitting the the curb um on an annual basis. I think there, I think there's some very proactive things we could do. Final thing I would throw out there. Um I am very grateful Diane um is a resident of Ulysses. She serves on our comp plan committee. Um and so I'm really grateful that she's actively engaged in this process and I really appreciate everything you said. The other place I would throw out because it agrees with her is Historic Ithaca. Historic Ithaca um and Significant Elements has been doing um reuse um type activities with historic materials now for a number of years with with a um a a program that also is training people to do specific job force development skills. Um so she's she's at, Diane is absolutely right. This is this is um proven economic development territory. Um and we have some really great resources in our area that other areas would be jealous of, and I'm sure are.
I just want to clarify on the recycling, if I can, that uh Tompkins County does provide uh county-wide curbside single-stream recycling. So paper and containers can go in one bin together for collection. We provide that collection through a contract on an every-other-week basis. Uh so that is something that's already kind of encompassed in services provided through the annual fee to provide that financial incentive to make it free and convenient. Uh information about that is on recycle Tompkins dot org. Uh and then we do have the pay-as-you-throw trash tag program, which I think is really important to just be aware of and something that I think, you know, certainly in the plan, we're talking about looking at it because of, you know, some of these challenges like residential dumpsters. Uh it's containerized set out, so for every bag of trash you put out, you're paying for the tag for the for the piece. And I think it is really important to be incentivizing this to make it convenient to divert as opposed to dispose. So I think it's a really good point.
I appreciate you clarifying that. The one thing I would say, though, is is that there are, I think that based on notes that have gotten left in people's recycling containers that I know and that certainly you don't want somebody to be putting trash in a recycling container, like true legitimate trash. But sometimes what is allowed and what's not allowed is rather quite confusing. And so when things are flagged and containers are flagged that for including inappropriate material, usually I would suspect, at least the people I know, it's not that they were trying to recycle something that's not accepted. It's that it's hard to be clear. And so if we could move even more so into a model of um accepting that there's going to be a level of that and that's just the way it is and it's to the benefit to get as much material as possible, because I do know that I have heard directly from people that they just don't recycle anymore because they didn't, it was too hard to keep up. Whether or not that's a fair assessment of the program, I'm not saying it is, but that is a component that in rural environments, when you have really other easy options, that's unfortunately a a side effect.
Yeah, and it's a good point. I'll certainly take it back to my colleagues as well. I think it's a challenge in the respect that we need to make sure that we're providing a clean enough stream that we we stay under a cer- certain threshold of contamination so that the material is, you know, continuing to go through the recycling process. And with the systems that had been put in place in the last couple of years, the this room is very clean. The the residential checks that we've done show a very, very low contamination level compared to other communities. Um I certainly understand what you're saying as far as clarification and making sure that people understand what goes in the bin. Uh I don't think it's being done maliciously either. I think there's.
It's it's worth keeping in mind that that the the regulatory framework here is that it's actually illegal to put recyclables in the trash. Uh but I don't know if very many people are getting note uh letters about, you know, this shouldn't be in here um in the trash side of things.
That's a way that um I, you know, I've envisioned that reuse could maybe help working with the waste collection is 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 helping with that sorting. We've got this, what I I call a subsidized workforce. We have volunteers. People who work for us don't perceive themselves as working in the waste industry. And yet what we're there doing is preventing things from going into the landfill, right? They're handling materials. So we, uh you know, I think we could help with some sorting and, you know, some people really um just are never going to be able to follow all the rules. So there's still some sorting that always needs to happen. And it's something that that we're constantly doing already because that we're we're sorting a lot of things that are regulated. Um and you know, I think there's something we could design that could really help minimize the the marketable materials from getting, you know, mixed up to the point that they become.
Connection not that great. Um is somebody, does somebody have their hands up in the legislative chamber?
Yes. Yes, I've got my hand up. Um I got a question for which there may not be an easy answer, but I think it should be asked. And it builds on what Ann Corman had asked and talked about earlier this afternoon concerning construction debris, of which is one of the major components of landfill waste. And I think we've got a big problem in that often developers, contractors, if there's asbestos in a building, they will take the entire building down with asbestos in place. And by that, they have to take everything to the landfill. They can't salvage anything. I use the old library as an example. Caitlin said uh the uh uh the 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 best reuse is to not tear the building down to start with, I paraphrase her. And we know my position on the old library should have remained standing. It was a crying shame that it came down. But it was a bigger shame when the person who bought it was able to take everything down and not salvage anything, use asbestos in place, took everything to the landfill, so we didn't get to reuse anything in that building. And I wonder how we deal with that. Is there regulation we should change that would prohibit contractors from being so cavalier in their demolition practices?
Yeah, so um Crowd, I know my internet is unstable. I apologize, but um so Crowd uh it it is, there is work being done in this community on deconstruction ordinances would that would require uh deconstruction instead of demolition. Deconstruction has to do the same thing demolition does in terms of dealing with hazardous materials. Um and there are ways to mitigate asbestos to salvage before without disturbing anything that's, you know, deemed hot. Um and then come back in afterwards. We actually worked with John Novar uh when he was doing his College Town Terrace project a decade ago. And we're in there before and after his asbestos abatement came through. Um we didn't do full deconstruction, but we did two two levels of salvage. So the uh it's happening all over the country. Deconstruction is is rising. There's there's ordinances um in San Antonio, Portland, Oregon, a number of other um cities. And I think that there is a push to try to get the city of Ithaca to adopt something. And I know that there's some work at the state level as well. I think it's going to take a while. But meanwhile, there's an enterprise approach without policy. Uh we did deconstruction without any ordinance for years and we have continued requests for it. Our problem is we don't have the infrastructure to absorb it anymore. The market is there. Um the capacity is not. The interest is there. The supply and the demand are both there. The infrastructure, I mean, just like um what Don Barber was talking about, we need to invest in some infrastructure that is not really policy-based. It's more economic. Um it the the infrastructure for reuse is um warehouses uh and retail outlets. And uh you know, we've demonstrated and built up a lot of um experience, thanks to the investment from Tompkins County over the last fifteen years. And we can clearly see that there needs to be more. And I think an enterprise approach, I'm not saying finger leaks reuse should do it all. We can't do it all. But I think we could really advise on what that hub could look like. Uh we could uh and we could help small enterprises get up and running, who could retail and offer repair uh services that are also in very high demand for, you know, bicycles, appliances, you know, name the type of material. And there's potential uh small to medium-sized enterprises that could come out of it, that could be uh really supple- there's there's a pretty significant supply that's kind of invisible right now because there's no filter on the dumpsters. Um but so I think really enterprise-based approach is something to focus on. And you can tell from this conversation because it's all over the place. It's a huge issue. And so one of one of the things I was going to ask T-Cog about interest in is some sort of and uh I I don't know what this looks like and I've had a partial conversation with Ann Corman because Peak is is, you know, the uh overseas materials management for the county. But some sort of advisory, reconstituting some sort of advisory group, a citizens group that could kind of grapple with the enormity of all of this, the um the the market-based solutions and bring them, you know, forward uh for for consideration. Um whether it's, you know, with Kat and her team or or economic development, you know, division, workforce development, there's there's all this work happening, but it it needs somehow to be kind of bundled up a little bit better.
Thank you.
Yeah, that um, it almost, well, I mean, it's the it 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 sounds like you're you're uh suggesting a direction that T cog might take that would be that might help support addressing that that uh, that missing piece, if you will. Um, there used to be a solid waste advisory committee. Yeah. Yeah, you've been around long enough to remember it, but 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 I think that it's it's a somewhat different group that you're envisioning.
Uh, yeah, I I think it's more of a question. Um, and you know, I think one to be asking uh, over the next few weeks, um, but hopefully, you know, something that's really inclusive that includes stakeholders, including the large institutions that are, you know, that when 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 Kat and I were first starting out in two thousand six, we surveyed, you know, it's everyone, right? Everybody falls into both of those categories, but at the institution level and the and the uh, my internet, I can see. Um, but uh, and and at the at the institution level, but also, you know, on the market side, there's there's enormous opportunity. But I think bringing people to the table to really focus on this could have an enormous local return, a huge cost savings for every municipality. And that's why I wondered if T cog, you know, might be, I see that you have a few committees, there if there might be interest here. Or, you know, and the question.
Yeah, well, a couple of possibilities. One would be to create a T cog committee. Um, the other one would be for T cog to simply uh, recommend to the legislature that a create your committee of stakeholders be created in order to help focus attention on this and 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 uh, explore uh, options for, you know, enhancing the the whole situation. I hate to cut off discussion. What do what do my fellow T coggers um feel about this? Is that is that Jason, uh, what was your what was your comment, Jason?
Yeah, that's my comment.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Another meeting too, but this is pretty important. Um, should we perhaps revisit this? Or could we entertain a a quick motion to encourage uh, creation of a stakeholder group to uh, enhance what Ann Corman is trying to do?
Perhaps if you put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
If that's if that's still timely.
That's a question. It may not be timely for this for the uh, management plan. But we're talking here more about implementation and the components. Because there's a lot of good stuff in this plan, as others have said. I mean, it's really impressive work, Kat.
There there's there's implementing, there's commenting on this plan and then there's implementing some of the uh, projects in the plan. And that's certainly going to last for a long time.
Exactly.
I think given that it's almost five o'clock, we should really put it on the next agenda and give this the time that it really deserves. Because anything we do now is just going to be rushed and chopped together and not well giving this the uh, time that it really deserves.
I I think that's probably wise advice. So let's let's plan on revisiting it. Um, there are other things on the agenda. But I don't think it'll take very long. The uh, the committee reports, of which at least some of them I know aren't happening. We have from Bob Lynch, uh, transportation report uh, ahead of time. We had a chance to look at that. Uh, I know that Rob House says he didn't have anything for energy. Um, how about broadband, Mark? Anything? You're still you're still muted.
Okay, and and thanks to Bob for his transportation report, uh, very thorough. That was nice. I um, yeah, so for broadband, um, I understand, I think um, probably um, others know more than I do about that, but I the the county, um, I, as I understand, um, the legislature decided to move forward um, to develop an RFP. Um, and I think they're going to be um, using the the model of um, of um, dividing it up into to different sectors in the county. As far as I know, that's that's where it is. That's being developed. I don't I don't know anything beyond that, so.
You don't know whether the RFP has been issued yet?
Pardon me?
So you don't know whether you're.
I I'm not aware that they've issued it yet. Um,
Hasn't been issued yet.
Okay. It's not.
Yeah, Jason.
Yeah, yeah, because we're gonna, they're gonna put it into drive.
Okay.
Wait.
I just, you know, for them, I'm going to make sure they understand that. Even if they do give it to somebody else, we're still rebuilding that. So that's what they got to understand. They want somebody else.
Okay.
I I think, uh, you know, stay tuned. We'll, I think we'll be um, apprised when the RFP is so is ready to share, so.
Mm hmm. Okay, thanks. Caitlin, anything on emergency planning and preparedness?
Not on that, um, but that's not mine. Um, I have cyber and IT. Um, but I also don't have a positive to respond to on that either, so I'm two for two. Thank you.
And and Mark, anything on emergency planning?
I Lisa covered it um, very well. So the um, and yeah, so um, county administration and the Department of Emergency Response um, have been working and they've developed a a draft shared services plan for countywide um, first response that's uh, being developed and I I I won't belabor it because Lisa Lisa summarized that really well. So I really, we really uh appreciate um, all the work and the 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 commitment to to this project and and um, so I mean, I'm excited about that. Um, and I I don't know if if Rorden has anything to add to that, but okay, that's that's my report.
If we were to get anything on water quality, it would have been from Cynthia, right? And we had to leave. So there's no, there's nothing there either. Um, apart from this revisiting the the solid waste management plan, implementation issues. Um, what do we, do people have that they would think ought to be put on the agenda for next time? Or do we just wait and see what materializes?
Would we, um, Joel, would we want to, I don't know, um, Don suggested that municipalities could adopt resolutions in support of the uh, the food futures plan um, or whatever, I don't know. We could do that as as T cog as well. I don't know if we.
I guess one of my questions is I asked earlier, who has short term uh, plans or programs or regulations? I don't know if that's important to other uh, communities, but that's something we're trying to deal with. And if it's only me, that's no point, but if it's a majority, that that might be something short term policies for rental housing.
All right. I would say it's something we're dealing with currently in in Danby. But we're also switching, we're also in a Mr. Switching to a new planner, so uh, there'll be a little slippage in that process as a consequence.
If if the county is right now working on a draft shared services emergency response plan in two months, will they have a draft that they can present to us and we can look at and talk about?
Joel, I'm not sure about a draft, but I did talk to Mike Sately and he said that he may have something to share in September.
That would be good for the agenda.
Yeah.
So I can reach out to him and generate that prior to the next meeting.
Do you want basically the the features of the shared services plan?
Yeah, let's 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 make it easier for Mark to do his report next month.
Mm hmm. Okay, the the agenda is filling rapidly. Are we good? Okay, well, thank you. I'll take us an excellent meeting.
Joel?
Yes.
If I may, uh, I had sent to the clerk a couple of days ago, and I don't think it got circulated to T cog members, a proposed resolution that would basically mirror what the Tompkins County Legislature did on June twentieth and would uh, support Governor Hokel's veto of the bill that would move most local town and county elections to even numbered years from their current odd number of years. Is there any interest by T cog in considering that resolution today?
It'd be helpful to read it before I uh, decide one way or another.
Yeah, it's too bad it didn't get presented to because it could have been a quick action item if we had had a chance to see it ahead of time.
I got circ- it circulated, I sent it to the clerk two days ago. And apparently it didn't get circulated.
That's that's correct.
Sent it to um, Katrina.
If you can, if you can send it to me, I apologize about that. I lost my things.
Thank you.
I think I think that, you know, I think that the um, many of us here probably are in sympathy with the with the feeling that moving it to the even number of years would not be a good idea, but um, but it would be nice to have some discussion about it before we were, you know, deal with it. Is it still timely next time?
Um, it depends because it hasn't been presented to the governor yet. When it is presented to the governor, as I understand it, she has ten days to either sign it or veto it. I checked this afternoon and it had not been presented yet. I have no idea when it goes to the governor, but it's possible that two months from now it may not be timely anymore.
How about if the uh, draft letter gets sent out to all of us and we can have our individual municipalities? If we meet in time, um, pass it individually, so you know, you get ten or twelve uh, letters instead of just one from T cog. And then if next month it's still sitting in limbo, we can do something at T cog level.
Okay, so we can we can cert- do it through circulation, right?
Everybody just received that.
I'm I'm sorry, was that last comment?
If you if you check your email, everybody just received that.
Okay. So the suggestion is that we bring it before our own uh, boards or consideration of of support. I think it's a good one because I as as a point you just made, you know, getting several letters probably be better than one from from us collectively.
I mean, I can I can read it for the record because it got a record in front of me, but uh, I don't know if we want to take the time.
Yeah. Hearing, I'm hearing not.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, with that, um, I think we can adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to read your transportation thing.
Okay.
You're going to read your transportation thing.